And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this May 21, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Lanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Wieland?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item C is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, May 7?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Before we move forward with the agenda, I had a short announcement for council and folks. I don't want to take too much privilege here, but my oldest daughter is graduating from Cedar Falls High this weekend, but she's also turning 18 today. So in the best efforts to embarrass her in front of the entire city, some pictures up here, I just want to wish her a happy birthday. They're having a party tonight that I'm missing, so I was going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but I think you guys wouldn't approve that and staff wouldn't like it. So thanks for that opportunity. Item D, is there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there should be revised FY '19 fee schedule placed in front of council tonight and also in the binder, noting just a minor correction on page four.
Thank you very much. So noted. Item E, Special Order of Business, E1 is a continuation of the public hearing on May 7th on a plan for the proposed South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area. For council's sake, this is really a continuation of the public comment portion, but I thought it would be appropriate to have Planner Shane Graham kind of go through what he did a couple weeks ago and we can go forward from there. So Shane, take it away.
Thanks, Mayor. So yeah, City Council opened the public hearing at its last meeting on May 7th for the establishment of the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area. Again, this was an area that was undeveloped and it was taken out of the Amendment Number 4 to the Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area, which City Council acted on on May 7th as well. So this area is generally bounded by the city limits on the west side, Highway 20 on the south, Highway 58 on the east, and then Technology Parkway on the north. So much of the land that the city's looking at putting in this urban renewal area is undeveloped, and it's the goal of this plan to help spur that development in this area. In order to establish an urban renewal area, there are several things the city has to go through. We have to have a consultation with taxing entities. We did that on April 10th, and we did not hear any comments from the other taxing entities. We also require Planning and Zoning Commission review of the plan. They did review it on April 25th and did unanimously recommend approval of it. And then also, the one other thing that the city needs is for any agricultural properties that are over 10 acres in size, we need written consent from the landowners. And so at the last meeting on May 7th, we were still needing two signed agreements yet, and that's why we asked that the City Council continue the hearing to today. We did get the other two signed documents, so we do have all signed agreements. And so staff is asking City Council to approve the plan and move forward.
Sounds good. Thanks for that thorough update. I'll now open up the public comment. Mr. Shane?
I'm concerned about this particular proposal because it doesn't just have Viking Road or something like that as the identifying thing. It has the name "South Cedar Falls." Now, to me, "South Cedar Falls" is all that area that's south of Green Hill. And of course, this doesn't go there, and I think that it's a really inappropriate name to call it "South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal." And that is one of the objections that I have. But I noticed also that any income, any taxation money or anything like that that ordinarily would go to the city goes to this particular unit. And they can have loans and they can do all kinds of things, but all the money that is raised, and supposedly these industrial parks are to be generating money for the city, but not these urban renewal areas. And of course, it seems ludicrous that you call it urban renewal when so much money has already been spent in that portion of the city. I mean, we're moving out the Public Safety Building, we're putting in Prairie Parkway, and I'm sure quite a few other things that have gone on the backs of the taxpayers. And that's why it's, one, very inappropriate to call it "South Cedar Falls," and, two, to say that it's urban renewal, and, three, to have all that money that is generated to go to this particular unit. I think it's a bad idea. At least change the name, you know? At least change the name.
Thank you. Open up any further public comment?
Mayor, council, my name is Lisa Scoobal. I'm with the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance in Chamber. First of all, Mayor, congratulations on your daughter's graduation. What a great weekend it'll be for you, and I hope you get out of here in plenty of time to enjoy her birthday party. You know, over the years, and I've been here for a while, I've really enjoyed watching the growth of South Cedar Falls, and I want to commend you and your predecessors on doing a very good job with proper development, so much so that the Cedar Falls Industrial Park and the retail area that's grown around that has been incredible, which translates to additional property tax that's being generated, as well as the sales tax from all those people that are working in Cedar Falls Industrial Park and doing a lot of their shopping while they're here during their weekday and even on weekends. And to that end, the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance in Chamber supports the adoption of the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan. And as I said, over the last two decades, this part of Cedar Falls has grown tremendously from a business park, I remember it being 1,000 workers, to one that exceeds 6,000, it's probably closer to seven nowadays, who work in that part of town. Over the years, the city has done smart planning to get here. This urban renewal plan will further support new development in this growing segment of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone further for a public comment this evening? Hearing is seen, and I'll declare the hearing closed. Item E2 is a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for the use of this area. Looking at the land use map, it says that it was originally geared in the comprehensive plan to being industrial zoned. And my understanding is that our plan is, we're looking at an event center, a hotel, office parks, is that correct? That that's the drive for it? Does that change the land use, that we need to be concerned about that?
As far as the plan goes?
Right.
Not necessarily. I mean, the future land use map in that general area that encompasses this South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area kind of shows a mix of commercial, industrial, office, business park, and so by establishing the urban renewal area, it really doesn't have an effect on the plan itself. But yes, I mean, those are some of the uses that we envision kind of going within that area.
So would we like to change the land use map then? Is it, I apologize, I'm new at this. Is this a formal change that we're looking at in land use as well?
Not at this time. I mean, I think for now, the zoning and the future land use map kind of coincide with each other to show this area for that type of development. Now, if we get a request that would like to change that, we would bring that to council at that time. So this doesn't include a future land use map or comprehensive plan amendment at this time.
Okay.
Anything further from council? Requires roll call vote, please. No, sir. No, that was council. The public comment was before. Item 3 is pass ordinance-
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
No, sir. Item 3 is pass ordinance providing that general property tax is levied and collected each year on all property located within the Southern Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comments from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is old business, pass ordinance 2923 providing that general property tax is levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is pass ordinance 2924 amending Chapter 27 Utilities relative to sanitary sewer rates upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is pass ordinance 2925 amending Chapter 27 Utilities relative to stormwater management rates upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is new business, G1 is a consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately. Is there any such request from the council? From the public?
D.
D is in David. Item D is pulled. I'll summarize briefly with the consent calendar. A is approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. That includes Katie Susong, the Board of Appeals, Phyllis Carter and Betty Danielson for the Community Center and Senior Services Board, Claire Struck for the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mary Carlson, Annie Gogler, and Leslie Perdau for the Visitors and Tours and Board service as well, and thanks to all those folks for the service they give to the city. Item B is receive and file the committee the whole minutes of May 7th. C is receive and file the bids received for the Center Street Trail Project. E is approve special event related requests. F is approve applications for various permits. And G is approve applications for licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item D?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Back to item D, it reads, receive and file the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2018 Public Sidewalk and Pedestrian Trail Improvement Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public?
There is an omission in D because I don't see anything in here about the improvement of the alleys that go through town. I mean, a few miles, a few blocks away from me, we had one of those famous alleys created at $67,000. I drive up and down an alley that goes from 22nd Street to Cerly that has not only severe holes in it and is very difficult to travel more than five miles an hour, but the other thing about it is that it hasn't been attended to at all. It hasn't been graded. It hasn't been, it had some concrete, asphalt on it, and that has not been attended to. So my feeling is that you have public sidewalks and trails, but I have been watching for it. There's nothing about the business of alleys.
Thank you. Anyone further from the public? Any comments or questions from council or previous speaker? Has been motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately for such discussion. Any such request from the council?
Item D is in Delta, and item N is in November.
You repeat that, please.
D is in Delta, N is in November. Thank you.
Is there other further on this side?
If he's got N pulled, I'm fine.
Okay.
Did he say M or N?
N is in November.
Nancy, November.
From the public? Yes?
Yeah. B's already been pulled, and D is already been pulled, right?
B is in Boy has not.
Okay, B, C, and then S and L.
Did you get those, Jackie? S and an L.
S and an L.
L.
Just so I clarify, B is in Boy, C is in Charlie, D is in David, N is in Nancy has been pulled, S is in Sam. Was that it?
And then it looks like it must be a T.
T.
It does look very much like it.
I will summarize the resolution calendar minus those items pulled. Item A is a resolution and announcement of rescheduling the date of the regular scheduled council meeting on July 2nd is now going to be on July 9th. Items E and F are resolutions approving and authorizing execution of lease agreements. G is a resolution approving and accepting the low bid for the Center Street Trail Project. H is approving and accepting the contract and bond for the Campus Street Project. I is approving and accepting the contract and bond for the 2018 Permitable Alley Project. J is approving and accepting the low bid and approving and authorizing execution of two rehabilitation contracts. K is resolution approving and authorizing execution of a subcontract for consulting services relative to a certified local government grant. L is resolution approving the River Place Third Edition Lot 4 Minor Platte. M is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a Surface Transportation Block Grant Agreement relative to reconstruction of Cedar Heights Drive. O is a resolution approving an amendment to the preliminary plat and phasing plan for the arbors. P and Q is approving agreements in conjunction with First Street Projects, and R is a resolution of support for Community Main Street and approving and authorizing execution of a Main Street Iowa Program Agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus the items pulled?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving back to item B is a resolution approving and adopting the city's FY '19 budget appropriations. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public?
I don't have ready access to all this stuff, so I just was wondering if there was any increase in the budget for city services like for fire rescue, for garbage collection, and even for any of the services that we're depending upon. I don't know that there was any yet. I would, you know, be happy to hear and answer.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, the previous speaker from council? Been motion second. This requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item C is a resolution approving and adopting the city's FY '19 payroll resolutions. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Has been motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item D is a resolution approving and adopting the city's FY fee schedule. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Green?
For item, let's see, looking at page 15, there's an item, "Street Meetings," Section 23.3, and it lists for the use of barricades for block parties or street closures, $25. I'd like to request an amendment to this to waive this fee for requests from neighborhood associations in the interest of supporting neighborhood development and community.
And that specifically for barricades?
For the fee that's required for barricades.
Okay. There is an amendment from Mr. Green to waive the fees for the neighborhoods of such for barricading different events around that area. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Are we defining just the established neighborhood associations as they exist today, or what are we defining?
Correct. Just established neighborhood associations as they are today.
Okay.
Anything further from council on that amendment? Has been motion second. Is this a roll call or a voice vote? Pardon me?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
I was going to ask a question.
Yeah, please. No, it's open.
What sort of revenue is being generated by this, and does it cover an expense under the typical scenario of revenue for a service covers the service?
Well, the fee was designed for special events which occur regularly, weekly during the summer months, in which the Public Works actually goes out and moves barricades and provides barricades for all these different events. Either the police puts them up, or else sometimes the neighborhoods will put up their own barricades. But it's kind of a, it's designed as a rental fee for those barricades. And I believe there are 30 or more requests throughout the summer for those barricades. So there's just a basic fee that we charge to help recoup some of the costs for public works. Sometimes there's some overtime costs on weekends if we have to make some adjustments to the weekends to those barricades, U.C. jaw for damage or missing barricades. That's what was the design, the purpose of that fee was initially designed for.
So it covers any number of barricades needed? It's just a one set fee?
Yeah, it's a set fee, and it changes based upon the number of streets that they want blocked. So if they want one street blocked, it's just one flat fee. If it's five square or city blocks that they want blocked, and there's multiple intersections where barricades have to be dropped off, then the fee increases to a, there is a maximum fee, I think, is that $100? Maximum of $100. So if you have 10 or more intersections that need blocked, it never exceeds that amount.
And then is there an additional fee for personnel? Like you mentioned, officers coming out for anything, or is that just provided with the?
There is not unless they make a particular request to have an officer work that specific event. But for an officer to do some routine patrol or for some of the events, officers can stop and help direct traffic at a particular intersection if it's just the beginning or the end of event without a significant period of time. But this fee is specifically designed to set the barricade, to provide barricades.
And it's been in place for how long, you think?
It's, how many years? Just a few. Yeah, just a few years. And the reason for it is, for years, we weren't providing, we weren't charging a fee for it, but it's getting, there's a lot of events, so we just thought that'd be a way to help recoup some of the expenses.
So the question for that would be, are these events driven by neighborhoods and neighborhood associations and just residents wanting to get together, or is this more like organizational?
Church or something.
Yeah, church events and things like that.
It is, it's really, for any, any time Public Works needs to deliver barricades to a location is really when the fee takes place. So if you have, if a neighborhood has a block party and they want barricades and we have to deliver barricades to them, there is that fee.
It sounds to me this amendment is simply for neighborhood associations that might be requesting it.
So a neighborhood is not required to have barricades? They could put up their own, they could put a golf cart in the street and block it?
We actually require them to, because we don't want just a golf cart in the street. What we really want is the appropriate barricades that would limit everybody's liability. You know, the MUTDC code requires certain types of barricades and that kind of thing. So Public Works knows exactly what that is and is able to provide whatever is needed for whatever event, to meet that code, to lessen that liability for everybody.
Any further questions or comments?
I think the, if I'm right, Mr. Green, your intent is to foster the neighborhood development side of things with that, making that motion, correct?
Right. It's not so much the dollar figure of it, but more the idea that we're going to charge for people to come together and to want to better their neighborhoods. So I wouldn't want it to be families coming out saying, oh, we have ourselves and our neighbors, we're going to take up the whole street, and we want to have a fee waiver. I just want to provide some small tangible ways of showing our residents, our neighbors, that we want them to come together and to make it as simple as possible for them to do so, without having to chip in like five bucks each. Would we want to define the number of people attending an event, like a 20, 30-person event? No, I think we could trust the neighborhood associations to do it appropriately. There's only four of them.
So when they ask for a barricade, they would identify that they are a neighborhood association?
Correct.
And all the other groups would not get the benefit?
Correct. That's how I'm understanding it.
I just-
Do you want to amend and list the four associations in this amendment?
You wonder if you should. I mean-
Yep. So what is it?
Jennifer, do you have some input?
I was just going to clarify when Rob asked about who it is. It can be a variety. It can be, just like you said, it could be just a neighborhood who's not an organized neighborhood.
Not your type.
You know, they just want to have a block party and they ask for it. It could be a group that wants to run a, have a 5K, and so we have to block off an intersection. It can be Community Main Street, it can be College Hill. I mean, it's a wide variety of what those street closure askings are. So I just wanted to clarify that, and like you said, maybe you want to clarify when you say the organized neighborhoods, you know, what that is recognized. But it is a wide variety of what we get requests for.
As I understand it right now, the amendment that's been motioned second is indeed to waive the barrier fees for neighborhood associations.
For the four current. Can I amend the amendment? List the four?
Well, that's up to council if you want to amend the amendment. I thought we were covering it with the amendment.
Yeah, just neighborhood.
To include the neighborhood associations. It might be four now. It might, there might be others that join in, but they're no neighborhood association. They fall into that category, as I understand it.
So just for clarity's sake, then, are we including the Community Main Street here? And I don't want to discount anyone one way or the other, but there's a lot of events that could put on there. And is that the intent? Or, I mean, when we have the neighborhood association meeting, Community Main Street presents, so. Just so there's no confusion. Are we talking North Cedar, Overman?
College Hill.
College Hill are the three that you're intending? Or Community Main Street as well?
Yes, but not Community Main Street.
I feel like there's a fair amount of events going on down there. So then we're talking about a different animal. And no offense to anybody involved, but just for clarity's sake.
Mr. Cruz?
Being involved with College Hill Partnership over the years, there's some big events that require a lot of barricades, as far as I understand. And waiving the fee for that would be, I would think, improper. I don't know, you could speak to that, Jeff, on what is required when they block off the College Hill to do a slip and slide and the water tank and some of the events I've seen in the past. It gets to be a big.
Yeah, but those are like, hey, or, it's meant to generate income or money. Boy, tough to parse that out.
I don't know, I'm just throwing in an observation.
This gets to be tough on what the verbiage actually says here, too. I mean, because College Hill's included, then Community Main Street should be included, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw the amendment. And I'll seek to gain more information on it to have a better proposal in the future.
It's been withdrawn. Is that from the start, we're okay? We don't have the second, the person seconding it need to withdraw?
He can withdraw it before.
Okay, very good. So before the council now is resolution approving and adopting. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion overall from the beginning, I guess, from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment request. Sorry. In our listings, we show the various fees, especially for the recreation center. And one thing I noticed when I joined council was we had the option as a council, as council members, to receive a $20 rate for the fitness center. And that for a family, down from $220 for the public, $20 I thought was significant. And it's not listed in our fee schedule at all. I'd like to make an amendment that we include the fees that we charge for city staff for these on this sheet in the interest of transparency. There's not very many of them. But I feel like we should, I believe we should vote on those as well.
So there's an amendment on the table to record the fees charged to staff and council.
For clarity's sake, don't we vote on that separately? A wellness plan?
It's part of the staff compensation.
Part of the staff compensation that applies to council as well in a separate vote. We do.
And policy, I believe. Is that right, Jennifer? Is that?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that there's like an exact resolution that passes those rates. But yes, we establish every year the wellness rates through the budget. You know, we say that we're going to continue the wellness program. And so it's probably more like a concept than it is a specific resolution that shows them. But then you get the memo every year, I think, that was emailed out today to just let you know that we do send that email out then, or memo out to employees and elected officials.
I trust, Mr. Green, that your amendment still stands, at least to have it be placed when we're doing the fee schedule each year annually. Or does that cover it for you? If that makes sense?
It would, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. There's been a motion to have the fees charged for staff and council for the wellness program published or indicated in the fee schedule for each year. Is there a second? Not hearing you a second. That amendment fails. Back to the original resolution. Been motion second. Any further discussion from council on the fee schedule? The public? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item N is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a Surface Transportation Block Grant Agreement relative to the reconstruction of the Union Road Recreational Trails. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Actually, yes, Mr. Mayor. Rob, did Rob, did you have comments on this? I believe you pulled this, correct?
Yes, I'll take a wave if you're.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I just had a question on where it says in the memorandum that we're approving for a loop, a completed loop. And I just had a question on this other part of the trail. So it's 27th Street isn't, doesn't have a recreational trail component to it when that was planned for?
There is a paved shoulder on both sides of 27th Street, so it is designated as a trail from Hudson Road over to Union Road.
Okay.
My question, and I was curious if mine was going to get answered there, but I'm curious if there are criteria or what other criteria for using these Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds on a Union Road, per se, versus making a connection on Lake Street? There's a trail that has been potentially talked about for a couple of years there, and I'm wondering if there's certain criteria that are more fitting on Union for these type of funds?
These are dollars that are federal aid dollars that are sent through Intercog. And then the metropolitan area looks at certain projects for roads, streets, and trails.